Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, 6:30 PM. Here in the Town Hall Meeting Room. This is a meeting of the Board of Assessors. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
No, Board of Appeals. You're wrong.
Thank you.
You're wrong.
Board of Appeals.
Can I say Assessors? I'm reading, I'm reading it.
It's only Board of Appeals.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion, Ryan.
Motion second. Board of Appeals, we are open for business. First order of business this evening is to approve the minutes for March 20th, 25. They were printed in your packet, as everybody had a chance to look them over. Is there a motion?
I made the motion. Seven seconds.
A second.
Is the motion a second? All those in favor?
Right.
So moves, meaning minutes accepted. Is there any other meeting mail we need to know about?
No, I think.
So brings us to our appointments, our new business, the public hearings. Our first case, case number 2025.05.20A. Case of Meet in the Middle LLC for property located at 474 Middle Road, map 23 lot 1, area 27. The area is 27.14 acres seeking a special permit for a proposed storage warehouse in the Residence A RA District per section 3333B14 of the zoning bylaw. The stated reason for petition is that the subject property is suitable for this low-density use given the overall parcel size and the use of this land for contractor's storage is compatible with the uses in the project vicinity. Is there a representative?
Yes, good evening for the record. Steve Gioso with SciTech Engineering. With me tonight are the commissioners, Chris and Janelle Ciano. They are the owners of the property and are looking to construct this particular facility. Briefly, as was written into the record, we're about 27 acres in size, fairly large tract of land. There was a house associated with this land that was recently subdivided out, this piece of property right here on the corner. So that was sold as part of their purchase of the property. The landowner retained ownership of that particular parcel, the original landowner. But Chris and Janelle now own the remainder of the property. What they did was they had us go out there, perform land surveys, do a well-in delineation, which still needs to go through conservation, but there is a delineated well-end on the property and we've shown it on the subject plan that's closest to the site. So application will be required with the Conservation Commission if this project moves forward. And for orientation on Middle Road, we're opposite Morse's Lane. Morse's Lane is here and coincidentally, Chris and Janelle live at the end of Morse's Lane. So they're invested in the neighborhood. They want to do a quality development here. And so the building, as shown, is a 7,250 square foot building. The goal would be to divide it into five contractor's storage units. We don't want to go with a prefab building. A lot of these types of structures go up there, metal frame buildings. This will be a stick-built wood frame building with a pitched roof. And intentionally, what we've done is we've set it up with the building about 100 feet off the road, parking in the front with person doors in the front only, so no loading or unloading in the front of the building. Any loading or unloading would occur in the rear of the building. So you'll get two things in that case. You'll get screening of the overhead doors from the public way. They won't be visible from anybody other than their remaining land. It's all in development, heading back in this direction. And so the typical things that people worry about, which is the overhead doors going up and down, again, in this case, they're behind the building and you get that natural sound buffering that will occur with that. Additionally, with the layout we've proposed, we've got an entrance proposed on this side of the property that would come in, two-way driveway, provide access to 14 parking spaces located in the front of the building. And we picked 14 spaces in looking at the zoning for your off-street parking requirements. Warehouse use, which this really doesn't qualify as, but the warehouse use requires a minimum of five spaces for this size building. We didn't think that was really the appropriate number to utilize for this. So we went and looked further and your zoning also says a non-residential use that doesn't fit into any other category would require three and a half spaces per 1,000 square feet. So when you do the math on that, we would require 26 parking spaces. So we basically set up 14 spaces in the front and as you can see, we've got an equal amount in the back here, so we would have a total of 28 available parking spots on the property, which would exceed the 26 spots that the formula would require us to have. So we think that, again, we're trying to keep in keeping with the off-street parking regulations, the site plan review process, which we believe we'll have to go through with planning in addition to this board and the Board of Health. But again, we wanted to look at all those regulations as we developed this particular The circulation on the site has been set up so that we can come in, circulate around the back. Contractors that would be utilizing this, we're looking at electricians, plumbers, those types of tenants that would rent space for my clients, again, broken up at a maximum of five units. And they would pick up materials in the beginning of the day, maybe drop materials off at the end of the day, tools, equipment, those types of things. But no work on the property, strictly storage of materials and a place for them to do office paperwork, but not to run their business. This is not a office building location for that purpose. Circulation would then allow for traffic to either exit through a driveway exit point in this location, or they could return to the same driveway that they entered and exit onto Middle Road in that location. When we set this up, we pushed the building back a little further than, we're not even close to any of the building setback requirements. The building setbacks in the residential zone would allow us to be much closer to the street, but we thought pushing the building back, we're about 100 feet off the road with the face of the building, on average, here in the middle. We've set up a large green space in front of the building so that we can provide for a landscape buffer between the building, the parking, and the street. So we think that, again, creates a nice buffering to the adjacent roadway. This is a very long piece of property. It has almost 800 feet of frontage running down Middle Road, beginning at this point here and running in kind of a southwest direction. With a broad wetland system here, the power line or the power easement just over, just off the drawing here. We've got great buffers to any of the abutting properties on that side. As I said, the person who sold the property is the closest abutter here. And we would propose, again, a green strip with landscape buffer plantings along that edge of the property as well. So in looking at the zoning, we met with the building zoning enforcement officer. He indicated that this fell under the special permit requirements, as written into the record at the beginning of the meeting, for a project in this district, the Residence A District. And the requirements are that we provide adequate buffering, landscape buffering to the project, and we think that with what we're proposing here, we've got a great buffer in the front, a natural buffer that will exist on one side, and a planting strip to our immediate abutter adjacent to the site on the northeast side. It's a low-intensity use. You'll see a little bit of traffic first thing in the morning, a little bit of traffic at the end of the day, and for the most part, you're not going to see vehicles at the site or a lot of in-and-out vehicle movement in the course of the day. We've looked at traffic during peak periods. When you're looking at this type of use, where we only have five units, they project, and they meaning the Institute of Transportation Engineers, this type of project typically would generate for this size facility anywhere between four and eight vehicles during the peak hour of the day. And the peak hours would occur in the morning and the evening, as you might expect, when the contractors are getting ready for work or returning from a particular project site. So we think it's low intensity, well-screened, and low-traffic impact, frankly, no different than a residential property being developed here. The clients, my clients actually looked at this property initially to develop houses on the property, and it has that potential for a number of homes to be constructed here. We did soil testing on the land last year, I believe, and we've got great soils for septic systems to support residential use on this site. As I said earlier, we've got 800 feet of frontage and with the combination of backlot and frontage lots, we can develop a few homes on this property, even without getting into an actual subdivision roadway design. Kind of the unique thing about this property, there is a water main easement for the city in Bedford that kind of runs through the property in the back here. You can actually see it's kind of mounted, but we're not getting anywhere close to that easement area with this particular development. One other thing we've done, and we're obligated to do under the conservation regulations, we'll have to meet all the stormwater standards, both here in town and the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. We've done a preliminary grading design and drainage design for the project. So we've set the job up and the project up so that none of the water from the site drains back into Middle Road. Everything drains away from Middle Road, right from the gutter line. We'll maintain the gutter line on Middle Road. Everything else will drain into the site. Here, this will drain into the site, carry around to the back. We'll do a water quality treatment unit, another water quality treatment unit. And then, so it's not visible from the street, we place a stormwater detention basin here in the rear with a discharge while we're still maintaining a no-disturb buffer zone to the adjacent well-ins. So we've looked at the local regulations and the state regulations. We believe we can meet all of those standards, so you'll get a good quality, water quality, and a discharge that is not directed into any of the Middle Road drainage and goes into a pretty large well-in system located on the property. So with that, I think that's an overview and be happy to try and answer your questions.
So to start, I'm just going to read the line 14, which is what you're basically applying under "storage and distribution warehouse with safe access over primarily non-residential streets and subject to reasonable screening and landscape requirements." I'm listening to what you're saying, and I know you're using this, but on one end, you're telling me it's going to be a warehouse, another end, you're saying it's not quite a warehouse. And I'm finding it a little hard to believe that it's just going to be a warehouse, whereas the use for this is just going to be storing materials, not the trucks or a meeting place for business or a place, as you said, to maybe have an office and do that. That doesn't fall under this. There can't be an office and a desk and that sort of thing there. If this is, if you're coming to us for special permit under line 14, it's strictly for storage of the building materials.
Correct.
Is that what this is going to be used for?
Yes. I mean, the answer when I say it doesn't quite qualify as a warehousing, this is kind of a, I want to say it's a new use in the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers' assessments. So their data goes more to like a mini-storage facility. This is a little bit different than a mini-storage, because in mini-storage, you bring your products there, you store it, and you don't go back there maybe for a year. This is going to have vehicles coming every day, so there's a little bit more, if we just looked at this as warehousing, as I said earlier, the parking requirements is much less, which the town...
I'm not so worried about the parking, so don't think that's why I'm asking the question. I want to know what the use of this vehicle, of this building is going to be, because I find it hard to believe that you can rent this just for the storage of this and like limit the hours from 7:00 to 7:00. You're going to have five tenants there with possibly four, five, three, 20 employees to them companies. So you're going to have a lot of people who have illegal access to it once it's rented out. How are you going to control the comings and goings before 7:00 AM, after 7:00 AM, that sort of thing?
Well, again, these are not locations where they are physically running their business. They are storing materials, and so every employee that belongs to, works for a plumber or an electrician is not going to be coming here. They're going to go to the job site. Someone's going to come with a truck or a van, pick up materials, supplies they're going to need for the day, and they're going to take that to their project site and then come back at the end of the day and unload, and that's the end of their activity on the property. The intent is not to have someone sitting here for eight hours a day. And that can be covered in the lease documents.
That's what I'm getting at. If we do even consider this, and you're going to have five units that are leased, the leases have to specifically say that these buildings are for storage of building materials, that the electrical contractor can't keep his boat in there or his holly in there and come get it out, you know, 5:00 on a Sunday morning, or bring it back out, you know, midnight on, you know.
Jump in, Steve.
That's not allowed.
Yeah. Just contribute yourself.
Christian, my wife and I bought the property. We're looking to develop it, as Steve had mentioned. I don't know all the technical terms. My vision for the property is contractor base. And why, my definition of that is, the guy that builds my house, Eastern Quality Construction, he has two employees, him and one other guy. He's constantly, you know, looking for space, if you will. He shows up in the morning, him and his guy, they load the truck, maybe they load some staging or some materials, they go to the job, they come back, they unload the truck. That's what I envision. I don't know if that answers your question. We don't want 20 vehicles. We don't want companies that have 20 employees. That's not, the idea of the parking limited like that is there'll be two spaces in the back of the building, so that anyone that rents has two spaces, which means they have two vehicles. I have no problem putting that in a lease.
At what times will they be available to access this property?
We just started talking about that. I don't know what is considered reasonable time. I start early, I end late. I know not everyone does.
And that's kind of part of my issue, is I'm a contractor as well. I know we need room to put stuff. I rent a garage, but I also mix use it. I can use it for what I want, because it's in the city in Bedford and I pay for a commercial spa. This is not commercial property. You are allowed to put a storage, a building for storage of construction things, but I don't, this sounds more like five businesses to me. So that's kind of what I want to make sure. You realize these people cannot run businesses out of here.
I do, I understand what you're saying. I can't say it wouldn't be, or it doesn't have the potential to be, five businesses, but it would be five limited businesses in a sense. It wouldn't be a, you know, a Ruskin Brothers Plumbing up the street that has 50 cars that pull into the parking lot every single day. That's not what this is going to be. I have no problem restricting that in the leases. It's not going to be White's Dairy that has 30 trucks that come in every day that are parked right on Middle Road. That's not what I envisioned. I envisioned two spaces in the back that people can park in. To be honest, when Steve designed it with all the parking in the front, I asked him if we could maybe limit that, because they really didn't want that, but he then explained to me the law and the rules and said, "You need to have it." So the envision is to be a storage facility for contractors to come and set up in the morning, small contractors, like myself, and have a place to keep your stuff inside. I don't want boats. I don't want outside storage. It's not going to be that. That'll be in the leases, whether the town, if this does get to that point, whether the town asks for it or not. Visually, I want it to look like a big barn with nice landscape and something that, when people drive by in the town, it can be something that the town makes, fits, fits in the scheme.
I got a couple more questions before we open it up for public discussion here. One is, I've got information from the Assessors' Office that this land is in forestry program. Does anything you're doing make that not comply?
It is, well, you want to... So there is 26, 27 acres. I believe it's 19 that's in forestry. The section that we would be developing is not. It is in regular residential A land, if you will. There are no restrictions on it.
Okay.
So forest, you wouldn't have come into play.
Okay. One other question. Maybe it'll come back to me. Forest, we should... Do you guys have any questions before we ask the general public? Is there any abutters or anybody else from the public who'd like to comment on this either way?
James Souza. I live in Mattel Poison Road. I know I'm also on the Conservation Chairman. Couple things I just wanted to mention is, one, that this is into the watershed that feeds the Cushionet River. Second thing is, is construction storage never stays construction storage. It ends up people working out of there, bringing in more equipment. I'm afraid there's going to be equipment brought there in the back. And I know that Chris does have an excavation company and everything else, and I mean, I wouldn't want to see anything stored there like that in the back. I'm not saying he's gone to it, but it's just some of my concerns. And that's all I wanted to bring forward.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and that's the point I'm trying to make. I don't know if I see the survival of a rental without the tenants thinking they can expand on their use. And if we do allow this, the use is going to be very, very restricted to the storage of materials.
Can I just respond to that and ask a question?
Sure.
Because I'm confused now. I do own an excavation company and I do have equipment, and am I not allowed to keep that on my property?
You are not allowed. Not under this, no.
No, I'm not saying under this. I'm just saying if I have a piece of property, I can't have a machine there if I, that's not allowed?
No. Not if you own that machine and you're using it. Your company owns the machine and your company is using that generally, you can't take that machine and store it on your residential property and come and go with it. No.
Okay.
That's running a business out of your home.
Okay, and that couldn't be done here, you're saying?
It could not be done here.
I can't have an excavator on this property?
Well, what I'm saying is that's not what you're applying for.
Okay.
You're not applying for a business. You're not applying for a retail store or a transfer station or anything else in any list. You're applying for a storage facility, storage and distribution warehouse.
So if the machines go inside the building, is that allowed?
You're going to have to talk to the building department a little bit more now. My answer's going to be no.
Okay.
This isn't for the storage of your equipment. This is, and I don't know. Another place I saw that and I read that, now I'm reading this again, it doesn't say that it's not for equipment. It says "storage and distribution warehouses," so technically, when you think...
A roof has got ladders, he puts them in, and that's his equipment. I have machines.
And when he's doing that, that's running a business, and that's not what you're asking to do here.
But that's not, that's not storage of his equipment? Because that's how, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just...
I'm not either.
I want to make sure that we're on the same page.
So you can run a customary home occupation out of your home. You can have a storage and distribution warehouse. In my opinion, bringing your equipment to and from a garage every night is not storage of materials, but again, it says, so when you think of distribution warehouse, you think of something that you're buying and selling. You're going to buy thousands of 2x4s and store them there because you get a better deal. You're going to buy a bunch of wire or a bunch of pipe or a bunch of materials. You're going to store them there and then you're going to distribute them out to all your jobs. You're not distributing your equipment. You know what I mean? That's, but it is storage and it is, it's pretty vague in this line, I'm going to give you that. Somewhere else I read it, it was for the, I don't know if it was an older book, it specifically said "materials." This line doesn't, so.
Okay.
That's going to be up to the building department, what you can do with it. And again, based on, in a way, honestly, I...
A forklift would be acceptable, right?
Because you're unloading the materials and stuff there.
But it's... No, I, full disclosure, I mean, that's, again...
It sounds like you're looking to run five businesses out of there, but that's not, this chapter doesn't cover that. All that parking up front and then nice windows in the...
When you think for some office space, that's not part of this.
I don't think, I don't think you're applying for what you want to build there.
I wouldn't consider running businesses, but I guess everyone's description of that could be different. But I would say it would be for storing equipment for the use, business. Like I said, it'd be contractor bays, whereas someone would go there in the morning, get their equipment set up, and then return at night. That's my...
It is an example, you know, a carpenter might have saw blades that they store there, they're circular saws, whatever it may be. You would think that's incidental to the storage and warehousing process, and it is storing their equipment there. You know, I think that that would be a reasonable interpretation.
I definitely agree with the storage of excess blades, excess this, excess that, but I think it's different if you're dropping off your ladders and your staging and your this and putting that there and taking it out on a regular basis. I think if that's what we're looking to do here, I would need more information on the bylaw. It's very vague here and I don't think it's reading the way I'm hearing the...
Maybe we can get a read from the building commissioner and get something in writing from him if that may give you a higher comfort level on what might...
I spoke to the building inspector today regarding this, and he was very clear and I was very clear with him back and forth, that it was for the storage of the materials, not for the, you know, ongoing running of the business where you're dropping off all your stuff daily, coming back. And again, the big issue I have with that is when you're doing that, I think the hours. I think anybody who starts at 7:00 is going to be here at 6:00 in the morning and versus someone who's on a job and, okay, you know, tomorrow we're going to need a whole pallet of 2xers or a bunch of pipe or whatever, and you bring that to the job during the day. I think this is going to be the before-the-day and after-the-day type of thing, and I'm not sure that suits the residential neighborhood.
Understood. Okay. I mean, it sounds like we maybe should be sitting with the zoning enforcement officer, get him to give us a little bit more restrictions on what is or isn't allowed under that definition, and then maybe we can come back to you and revisit it with maybe a written report from him.
That would be very helpful to me, with the rest of the board then.
It would be helpful to us as well as them, because...
I think, I don't want to see you spend the money on this and then we say, "That's not what we..."
I don't want to do that. And I'm, you know, we get along great with our neighbors, we get along great in town. We're not looking to do something that we can't do, and I certainly don't want to tell you, "We're going to bring in three pallets of lumber and take them out in the morning," because that's not what we're going to do. We're going to store tools and we're going to store things there, and guys are going to go there in the morning, they'll load their trucks.
Yeah.
And they're going to come back in the afternoon, they're going to unload their trucks and...
Again, as a contractor, that's what I assume is going to happen.
100%. That's what we're...
And I want to make sure that if we allow this building, it's for that use and everybody knows it's for that use, or it's for the use and they don't want it, you know, one way or the other. I want you to be able to use the building for what it was designed for.
100%. That's, and we want the same.
If, if that's fair to everybody and...
Just withdraw right now?
Well, no, I wouldn't do that. If that's fair to everybody, I would think that we get something from the building department saying what can and cannot be and, like, you guys...
We just ask for the continuance for tonight's proceeding and come back at your next, your next regular scheduled meeting and...
That'd be great.
And hopefully have that, assuming he's available to, you know, I know he's probably busy, so we'll...
I don't think there'll be any problems over the next four weeks, him explaining to me in person or in writing exactly the...
We'll get something for the record, because it'll help the clients also understand what their limitations would be if in fact you grant a permit for this. So that would be helpful.
Are you requesting a continuance?
Yeah, on behalf of the applicant, we would, unless there's somebody here on the street.
Please.
I'm Gene Willis. I live on 402 Middle Road.
I'm Gene Willis, I live on 402 Middle Road in Cushing. I'm, I'm not in a butter, but I'm up the street on Middle Road from the proposed building. I had, I have the same concerns that have already been mentioned here by everyone. I'm also concerned about the residential area, the residential nature of the neighborhood, and the building of what is, appears to be a commercial type building in the residential neighborhood. And I hope that that would not have a negative effect on property values in the, in the And I'd like to get some clarification about exactly, exactly what's gonna be stored in the building and how much, just how much traffic we would expect to see during the course of the day.
Ourselves as well, that's why we're, we're looking to get more information before we move forward.
Thank you.
Love to have you back at the next meeting if possible.
Sure.
So you can listen to it all and give any more opinion you may have. I believe there was a request made to continue to the next hearing. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to continue to the next hearing?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Do you have a date yet for that meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Yes, Steve. It's June 17th. Perfect. In fact, I need your signature on this.
Six, there you go.
The case number, location. Yeah, very good. Thank you, Ben-Ton.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, this, this goes into more explanations if you get the...
Can we be able to, with a special permit, say what we're gonna allow and not, and then let the other side accept it? Well, ours are an issue for me, with five different individuals.
Right.
Okay. That being continued, we're gonna move on to our next case. Case of Robert Gonzalez, 6 Pine Street, map 18, lot 32H. The scope of the work, the scope of the proposed work includes construction of a one-bedroom ADU addition to the existing house and remodel the existing house to become a two-bedroom dwelling. In addition of the septic tank and dosing tank to connect the ADU to the existing septic system, the stated reason for the petition is failure to meet the sideline setback. Who's representing?
I'll do it. I'll, I'll, for our 18-gauge front drive. Yeah, he wants to put an ADU for his parents, and that's a corner lot, 'cause there's a paper street there.
Yep.
The building inspector says we need 25 feet on that side and the front. So we're gonna have 17, so we're just asking for that variance for that little bit. The guy across the street on the opposite side, he's only eight feet, we need for his, so I mean, we're actually...
I'm just gonna give you guys my quick input on this one, and I did speak to the building department on this as well today. Basically, because they have two streets, they're supposed to comply with front yard setbacks on both of them, which is 25, versus normally you're 25 in the front, 20 in the rear, and 15 from the sides. If you drive down this street, this is a side yard, this street does not exist, it doesn't lead or go to anywhere. If that little, if the paper didn't show it, there would be a sideline, it would be 15 feet, which is more, they've got 17 feet. I kinda see this as a total non-issue. I do believe the building inspector did the right thing in sending it here, because he's gotta comply, and you've got the paper street there in the middle. But basically, the front yard setbacks are good, the back are good. We're not here to discuss the ADU, it's allowed by use. If he wanted to put a big addition or a bigger garage or anything there, it would be the same thing. We're only here to talk about the setback of 17 feet versus the 25 that's required because of the paper street.
Any concerns? And any concerns about that?
Yeah. So if you guys don't have any questions, I'll go to the floor. Is there any butters who wanna speak on this? Anybody else who wants to say anything on this? Your marshal on the other side as well?
No, my, no, my, so he's...
He's not here?
Yeah, he's not, he's fine. He's the one with the garage who...
Yeah, he's up against eight feet, and again, same, you guys share the, share the lawn down the middle there somewhere, and it's all respectful.
Nobody has problems with him. They would be happy to have my parents there, actually.
You guys got any other questions?
I think I'm ready for a motion to go any which way you guys choose.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Okay.
But final discussion and vote.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
We didn't open once I wasn't worried about it.
Well, I didn't.
I'm good.
I'm good. You don't want the rules to be set.
I understand. Pretty cut and dry on this one, guys. You got a motion?
I make a motion that we allow the...
Setback of 17 feet. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Good luck, guys.
Gentlemen, is Robert Gonzalez here?
Yeah, he's the man.
Okay, very good.
I ain't wait.
All right.
So we're still in an open session here, guys. As soon as the clerk's done, we got a little bit more on the new business.
And people sign now. As soon as they sign?
Yes, go on.
And watch this. Excuse me, it's gonna... Are we allowed to bring any questions on that last issue? For you, from my personal knowledge?
Sure.
They're looking to store, and then can they request to have that so that it could be five individual, like they could have offices, like...
Like you described. They've gotta, they've gotta apply for what they want, that's...
Right. But they can, they can apply for that, come to the spot, it's not necessarily...
Okay.
That's what I was concerned with.
Okay. Getting back on the new business or really on the future business, we have two cases for next month set in stone. We had two cases that came in like two hours later than what they're supposed to be stamped on Monday, for a few reasons. Our clerk is gonna be leaving us again, and we're gonna be searching for a new one. So I'd like to get all this business done, and as much done as we can prior to that.
Yes.
I would like to request the board allow the two late ones, again, they were just a couple hours late, so that we can process all four cases at our next meeting as well as the continuance.
I need a motion that we allow that for expenses.
I don't wanna make corrections all the time for people, because what happens is, you know, you've got the other departments that have to handle the paperwork, the assessor's office and stuff, but with this one, it's to help facilitate what we need to do prior to having an absence. So there was a motion, was there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, to allow the other two, the two cases that were slightly late. We'll also have this, this one continued. All in favor? So moved. If you would publish all four of the new cases for the next month.
Yes, I would.
Appreciate that, and we appreciate your work.
Yes.
Any other new business?
Uh, no.
Okay. Any old business, anything you guys wanna discuss?
If you could just sign these meeting minutes.
I will take care of that. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor. So moved.